We have a moment of silence for our victims of COVID-19 and also for Michael John Cavallaro, who passed. Okay, thank you. And what I'm gonna do is open the mics for the public to see if anybody would like to speak. Does it counsel?
Hey Pete, can I just make sure that everybody that I have is?
Yeah, just your name.
I've got Chris Cosgrove, Dave Lawson, Doug Skelly, Katie, Mike Naehm, and Tom.
Mary Jane, I'm here too.
Who's that?
Mary Jane.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council? Okay. I'll ask one more time, anybody from, from that would like to address the council? And Randy, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you Pete.
Okay, thanks Randy. So Randy's on the call with us as well as Nancy McGavick and our tax collector and Brian Lastra, our tax assessor for any questions. We don't have public comment, so I'd like to move real quick to Mayor's comments real fast. So, yup.
Somebody's got their microphone open with a radio or a lot of people behind them, so it's hard to hear you. Could everybody mute while you're speaking?
So I muted everybody. Okay, so real quick, as far as updates, our numbers in speaking with Mike Cressman. For the state as of today, we have 12,035 COVID cases that are confirmed. In Litchfield County, we had 403, and in New Milford, we have 94 COVID cases. Governor Lamont continues to want us to all follow the stay safe, stay home protocols, which includes proper hand hygiene, 20 seconds under the spigot, washing your hands thoroughly with as hot a water as you can tolerate, or with any kind of hand sanitizer. Also gatherings of five or less, and also six feet or more for social distancing. Also, we've told people that it's beneficial to do some exercise and also to check on a family member or a friend. Also, what we've done here in town is we've closed all basketball courts, tennis courts, skate parks, fields for social distancing. The New Milford High School track so far is open. We have the police who are patrolling that area just to make sure that people are following the proper social distance. Town buildings are continued to be closed and only by appointment only to the departments. Facilities continues to do the deep cleans in our buildings, and I can't thank them enough for that. I'd like to thank the rest of our town employees, including our New Milford Police Department, our facilities, our DPW, and all our essential town workers that continue to come in and work each and every day, and I can't thank them enough for that and for our residents to continue to move our town business forward. I also signed two executive orders. One was for temporary lodging, which is suspended until the governor's order is lifted, and that's to provide protection for our New Milford residents. And also, New Milford parks are only for New Milford residents for social distancing. We had monitored the parks, and a lot of parks were over subscribed. A lot of people weren't practicing social distancing, so I had asked Randy to help with an executive order, which we did. Also, we're working on calling every New Milford business. I've asked some of our employees to kind of move over and help Karen Pollard to contact all the businesses, to let the businesses know that there is opportunities for grants and loans. And we're gonna try by Friday to have contacted every business in New Milford. I'll let you guys know more once we get through that process, and I can't thank employees enough for helping us with that endeavor. I also have a couple of employees that are checking the sites on social lodging, temporary lodgings, and we are getting in contact with them and letting them know that right now they're suspended in doing such. Also, like to thank all of our first responders, our medical staff, town employees, all for their efforts as we continue to battle this virus. Also like to thank all the, the public at large for everything they're doing for us. So the signs that they're, that they're doing, Doug, thank you, and design signs for the Milford Strongness out in the front of the building. We had Howie Hammer do another one. We've got people putting signs in chalk all over the place, people paying things forward, and it's just wonderful to see our community really working with one another and helping with one another. So I can't thank them enough for all of that. That's pretty much all I have for Mayor comments tonight. So can everybody still hear me? Okay. So you guys can unmute yourself. There's like a little button there, it looks like a little microphone, so you can just click that, and it should unmute you? You guys able to? There we go, now we got some people coming on.
Okay, alright. Item four, the consent agenda, move to accept item four A, prior minutes, and item four B, tax collector?
Second, this is Chris.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Doug? Open. We can't hear you.
Aye.
Did you, thank you.
Tom, can we hear you?
There we go, now you, I'm unmuted, I'm sorry.
Chris, we can hear you.
I voted yes.
Dave and Mary Jane, we hear you. Dave and Mary Jane? Is Walter on the call?
I don't see Walter, David, David's here.
Mary Jane? She probably, I don't know if she can't, you have to unmute her, but.
No, she's.
She was on her phone, I think.
Yeah. And Dave's, Dave's on here.
Did he vote?
Dave, can you hear me?
No.
Hang on.
So who voted then? Who's not, who's not able to vote? So Dave and?
Mary Jane.
And Mike Gold, is, is he here?
Mike Gold is not here, and Walter is not here.
Michael Naehm, did you vote on that? Michael Naehm?
I voted yes.
Okay, so it's 6:02, I guess, right?
Dave, are you there? Hang on, hang on one second.
We don't have Stephanie, we don't have Michael Gold.
We're all getting used to this.
Right, and, and Walter, so it's 5:02, if Dave and Mary Jane didn't vote, or can't vote.
I'm seeing if I can get a hold of Dave.
Michael Gold says he's there.
Hello?
Dave, can you, can you hear us?
Yeah, just calling you on the other line, phone ahead.
Oh, okay, I got you on this one.
Pete, Michael Gold is listening.
I did vote yes.
He needs to be unmuted.
So Dave, Dave Lawson voted yes.
Okay.
I see what might have happened. Don't mind, can you hear me now?
Uh, I can't, I can hear you on my phone, but not on the call, not on the webinar.
That's okay.
Okay, and then you're saying that Michael Gold has allowed?
Michael Gold needs to be unmuted, he said. Do you have somebody showing up just as a phone number without a name?
Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna unmute himself.
Yes, can you hear me now?
There you go. The unmuting process takes a little bit, I think.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so Mike votes yes.
Okay, Michael, what time did you join the meeting? Do you know, Michael Gold?
7:02.
Thank you.
And we don't have Mary Jane?
Mary Jane, are you on?
We have seven.
Okay, okay. Yes, okay, Katie?
Okay, so next, item five, youth agency. Move to allow the youth agency to accept a donation of $2,012.50 from Waterbury Youth Services. These funds are to be used for the agency's juvenile review board to provide programs and services for the project participants. The fund should be placed in revenue account 1044190043305, and that a subsequent amount of $2,012.50 would be placed in the expense account, number 1044190059, I'm sorry, 58905.
Do I have a second?
Second, this is Chris.
Okay. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
Okay, item number six, six A, emergency temporary tax relief. Pete, do you want to discuss this before we move into this?
Yes, so basically, what this is, is Governor Lamont, in his executive order, has given the town options to help our taxpayers, as a lot of them have lost jobs or have job reductions. And he's given different options for, for us as a council to look at. Nancy, are you on the phone?
Yes.
Nancy, can you kind of give a quick overview to the council of kind of the different options that are available?
Okay, so did they get the memo that?
Yes, they did today, that you gave me, yes.
Okay, so there's two programs. There's the deferment program, which is actually not really a deferment, it's just extending the grace period to 90 days instead of 30 days. If payment isn't made on or before October 1st, the interest would revert back to July 1st at the 1.5% per month. The second program is a low interest rate where, for a 90-day window, the interest would be .25% a month instead of 1.5% per month. On the deferment program, there's two different ways that it could be done. You could, we would have to make people apply for the deferment with an application that they would have to fill out, or the town council could vote to extend it to everyone, and there would be no application that would need to be filled out. Only landlords would still need to fill out the paperwork to show that they are affected. Um, yeah, go ahead.
Does anybody have any questions so far for Nancy?
No.
Nancy, I see you have a note there, if we choose the low-interest rate program, we need to update the tax software? Is that a big deal, or?
No, the, um, the software company deals with like 130 towns or more, and they would be doing that automatically, they're already working on a solution.
And I have some other questions, I don't know if we, it's more appropriate to do it after the motion, or to do it now?
Somebody want to make a motion so that we can have more discussion?
Well, depending, I can make a general motion?
Yup.
Okay, so move that we accept one of our three options and implement an emergency temporary tax relief model mandated by the governor's executive order 7S, as in SAM 6, during the time of the health and civil preparedness emergency.
Second.
Second from David Lawson. Now discussion, Chris?
So, so I see that Board of Finance is recommending the low-interest option, doing that exclusively. Do we have? I'm wondering in terms of the operation of the town, of our finances, is, does one, are there significant differences on how we operate our finances if we choose one or the other, or I guess both is a third option?
So Nancy, could you, in a roundabout way first, tell Chris, you've been on a few conference calls, and what are most municipalities doing?
Um, most municipalities are doing the deferment program where they're opening it up to everyone.
Pete, can I, Dave Lawson?
Yup, Dave.
Well, first of all, I think we're all affected by the, by the virus, one way or the other. So, and to make our residents prove something, I think this is more burdensome, not only for them, but for our government employees. I strongly, strongly suggest that we adopt the deferment for all taxpayers, period.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Yup.
David, if you're done, I just wanted to make it public or say it out loud that this deferment would not have any effect whatsoever on people who are already in a past due mode. That it's not an amnesty or a waiver if you're already in arrears. Because I just want to make sure, especially council members, that they understand that, because people will be talking to us about it.
That's an excellent point.
If you're delinquent, you remain delinquent when this goes into effect.
Yup. Well, I think we can put that into the motion as well, just to make sure.
Chris?
So, let's say we open it up to everybody, and, you know, everybody, so everybody's eligible, so everybody decides to put off their taxes for three months. What does that do to the finances of the town?
So first is everyone that's escrowed with their bank, they have to pay, they're, they're excluded. So right now, about $30 million of our cash flow comes in from August to the end of September. About 14 million of that, almost 15 million, is escrowed. So about half of that, you would be looking at, that would be deferred. So if they did not pay, and they could not pay with the 3%, too, so it would just be dependent on either one, it would be a major cash flow hit to the town, which we would then have to do some mitigation to that. Which could be freezes, furloughs, you know, it would be a whole host of different things.
Well, we're also, Dave Lawson, again, we're making the assumption that everybody eligible would defer their taxes. I, I for one, I for one, will not. That's, so we are clear on that. You know, I am confident, you know, we've had these issues before, I know when the Board of Education worked with the town, when we found that we had some financial issues, I believe many of you were on the town council at the time, too, two years ago, when the governor withheld monies to the towns. And I'm confident that we can do this in a proper way with minimal, if any, any job losses, etc.
Hey Pete? How about taxes on leased automobiles? I know you had mentioned automobiles could be a source of revenue loss, but on the leases, those leases, the taxes from the lease company should not stop, right? Just like the escrow wouldn't stop on, on mortgage escrow tax, property taxes, correct?
Olga is, is on the line. Olga, can you unmute, and do you know the answer to that?
Hi, everyone, I apologize, could you please repeat the question?
I'm just, just pointing out that in regards to the property taxes on leased vehicles, it wouldn't that be, wouldn't we continue to get those payments as well, just like we would on escrowed monies from a mortgage?
Yes, I would assume so. I don't think there was a specific language yet, yet released specifically to that situation, but it shouldn't be, I mean, we're expecting it not to be different?
Right, right, because as I'm reading in here, right, real property, personal property or motor vehicles?
Yup.
Municipal water, sewer, and electric. So I'm making the assumption that if you're paying within your lease, your property taxes are paid through your lease charge, we should be receiving that revenue, so that should be a little bit of a reduction in revenue loss. Let's say if everybody in town who had a car decided not to pay their taxes, you'd still have the lease portion of folks would be getting their taxes in. I, I like David, David Lawson, I'm gonna pay my taxes, I think most people will, I think it'll be a small percentage of folks that won't, and if the, the small percentage of folks can't, well, this is a, this is a hand they do need at extraordinary times, let's face it. You know, nobody ever imagined this would ever happen, ever, and now we're all in it. So I, I like David, and I think some others, I am in support of the deferment program across the board, across the board.
Katie?
Yeah, just something else I want to state, you know, realizing that we do have somebody watching us, I suppose, I just want to make it clear that in the deferral option, that it, aside from the fact that it doesn't relieve you of your delinquency, it also, it's your motor vehicle taxes, your property taxes, and your municipal sewer rate charges or assessments. Is that correct?
That's what it states.
Everybody?
That's correct, that's, that's correct.
Thanks, Doug? Yup?
Just a quick question, maybe I missed it. Are we, what was the start date on that, and obviously the end date, who knows, push out further? What's the start date, was it March?
March 10.
March 10?
March the 10th.
Nancy, Nancy, it's, it's for July 1, taxes deferred till October 1st, correct?
For the town, I don't know when the sewer, if when the sewer has any bills that become due between April and July.
Right.
But for, but for us, it's the July 1st bills that are affected.
We'll push my, say October.
I have a date of March the 10th here.
Okay.
They changed that to April 1st, because taxes always become due on the 1st.
They did that for?
March 10, 2020 through July 1, 2020.
They did that for towns that do quarterly taxes.
I see.
Do semi-annually, so our.
So Nancy, what is the exact date for us in this? Give it to me, please, so I can write it down.
The taxes would be effective between July 1st and October 1st for the 90-day period.
July 1, 2020 to October 1, 2020. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, you had a question? Michael Gold? Mike, you had a question? You gotta unmute, Mike. Okay, Randy, did you have anything you wanted to? Okay, you got it, okay. Okay?
Yup, can you, can you hear me now?
Do?
Yes. Do we have to do both the deferment program and the low-interest rate program? Or are we choosing one or the other, or both?
We're choosing one or the other.
One or the other, and why wouldn't we go with the low-interest rate program?
Why do you think we should?
Well, I don't think we've talked about it yet, right?
Well, you can start.
So the low interest, so the low-interest program, if I'm, tell me if I'm wrong, Nancy, but the low-interest program starts July 1. It makes the annual percentage rate of taxes instead of being 18%, 3%, which is about an 82% reduction from the interest charge?
Yes.
I believe that would be per annum, whereas if you didn't make your payment by October 1st, you still would continue to do the 3%, right? Nancy?
It's, yeah, 3% annually, .25% per month. So, um, come August 2nd, there would be 5, .5% interest for, .25% for July and .25% for August.
So, wouldn't that help with the, the cash flow?
Well.
Oh, it's worse.
It may help with the cash flow, but I think we should rely on contingency fund or our general fund if we get into that serious of a situation. I'm, I'm of the ilk that we're helping people that absolutely need it, and that charge on it just doesn't make any sense.
This is Mike Naehm, can I talk real quick?
Yeah, Mike.
The big difference between the two is, is come, if you're still hurting financially, come October 1st, you owe your whole tax amount. The other way with the 3% means that you could keep going and not have to pay an 18% interest charge, you only have to pay 3%, which is, you know, which is roughly the amount of a, of good mortgages. So if someone doesn't get back on their feet right away, come, come October 1st, they're gonna be delinquent, and if their situation hasn't changed, and we don't even know if it's gonna change, how much it's gonna change between now and then, they might still be, have a lot of trouble. At that point, are we gonna readdress it and say, well, maybe we should give them more time? That's the part that I don't know, at least with the 3%, it's not this big wall that you're gonna hit in, in three months.
Well, I think we can do something now, and we can always revisit the situation if it's that dire in the fall.
I, go ahead, Katie?
Yeah, I just want to say that I, I too go along with, as Dave said, that the point of doing this, from the governor on down, is to help people who are affected. Now, to not use any application where someone needs to swear that indeed they were affected, I think, Tom, you mentioned that most people are gonna pay their taxes on time, we have a pretty good rate of people paying. And I don't, personally, to me, I think we should be as benevolent as we can to people who are really out of work, or businesses that have had to close. And if we had to revisit it again, for all we know, this may continue longer than we think, it's so far not really been like anything we've ever known, so I can't imagine that we wouldn't be able to if we found that October was just not a realistic time for anyone to recover.
Tom?
I'm with Dave on this.
Yeah, and, and I agree with Dave, and I, and I understand where the two mics are coming from, too. I think we will, we will most likely have to revisit something come the fall. We, we may be revisiting this in July and August. I mean, but I think from a, the deferments program is a safe program right now, we do not have the manpower to have an application process, so we have to make it available to everybody. As David said, and many of us know, this, this affects everybody in one form or another, and the majority of the people will pay their taxes. But we will, in my opinion, we're gonna have to revisit some other issues similar to this, and maybe some extenuating circumstances. and maybe some extenuating circumstances to extend low interest rate loans out to folks that have really been, that have suffered. And hopefully by that point, we can get our arms around this a little better.
Chris?
I think I agree that everybody's been affected by this, but I don't think everybody's necessarily affected financially. I would like to understand if we did some sort of program where you had to show a need, how mu, what would the personnel resources required to manage that delight?
So Nancy, how many people do you think you would need if we were going to do an application?
I don't know. I've never faced anything like this before. Hard to say, you know, how many people are going to be applying for it. I really don't know.
I mean, I don't think it's something that would be difficult to show a need for. Lose your job, something like that. You're?
Lawson again. I agree with you on all this, but I think people's anxiety level is pretty high as it is. And some of you are even small business owners and trying to get this special program figured out for paying your employees is a nightmare. And I think, you know, just putting these obstacles in people's way is just unnecessary.
I just don't see it as a big obstacle.
Doug?
Well, you and I disagree on that. It's just another, let's make it simple, let's make it fair and make it available.
But I think we have a fiduciary responsibility for the town's finances as well in terms of cash flow.
I think we need to vote on this. I know that obviously, you know, we don't know what's going to happen next week. But I think the point is, let's defer this. We can revisit it and then we can either change it, move it forward, extend it, whatever we need to do. Right now, we're in a position that we just need to try to get the taxpayers some relief. There's some people that need it. And at this point, we don't know what's going to happen next week, next month. So I think for now, this will be prudent thing to do and then we can revisit it at another time. And then if it gets to the point to where we feel like it needs to be changed or it needs to be dismissed or removed, then we could do it then. We could, we could have this discussion back and forth for the next three hours, but we don't know. At this point, we're just trying to give some tax relief.
Katie, help me out. I'd like to amend the motion on the table.
Okay, I have my hand up to say something. I just, Chris, your comment before, I understand. We are definitely trying to do what's right from a fiscal point of view for the town. That's what our main cause is here, right? But I can say that based upon the programs, which I deal with every day, none of the programs have gone as smoothly as every part of government had hoped. Your unemployment, yes, you could apply. If your boss said, I'm sorry, I gotta let you go, I can't stay open. That didn't come right away. It still hasn't come. It was supposed to be the beginning of April and it still hasn't started. So there's an example of someone who is going to have more than just a tax bill to worry about if they've lost an income in their home and they're waiting for unemployment. And so even for the small businesses, the payroll protection, that's taking far longer because of the paperwork and the red tape. And while I think having people attest to the fact that they are needy is a, you know, we all have different ideas on that. I think that people who don't need it won't ask and people who do need it will ask. And I think although fiscally, we try to be that's number one, but I think if we don't have compassion for our neighbors, then, you know, then we're kind of working towards the wrong goal. And I know you have compassion, Chris, and I understand where you're coming from. But for me, I say, let's, let's give it a go as a deferment and go from there.
Pete, can I make a point real quick?
Yep.
So just so everyone gets it clear on their head.
This is Mike Naom.
We have to make, we have to make the assumption that most people will take advantage of it. I haven't filed my taxes yet. The government said I have till July 1 or whatever it is. I'm waiting till July 1 to pay. So if someone has a choice of paying a credit card bill that has interest or not paying their taxes, but we need to right now make the assumption that most people will take advantage of it. I don't have that choice because I have a mortgage with a bank. But for my business, if I have a choice of going into my line of credit or not paying my taxes, I'm not paying my taxes. So let's just make the assumption right now that if a person has the opportunity to take advantage of this, they will. So we have to make, we have to look at that as our cash flow and say, we're not going to get, 90% of the people will take advantage of this.
And is this, this is a mandated thing, correct? I mean, this is not like we could just say, no, we're not doing this.
You can say no.
Well, no, you have to do one or the other or both.
Do one.
Right, you have to do one or the other or both.
As I read at the beginning, it is the governor's executive order.
Right.
7S, section 6.
All right, listen, guys, I gotta, I, this is, you know what?
Tom, hang on one second. Mary Jane, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, can you finally hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Finally got on. Okay. Yes, I support the deferment program. I just think this is going to be a long ongoing process. And I think to be fair to everybody, we need to go with the deferment program. I just don't see any way around it. So I agree with what Tom said and I agree with David Lawson that, you know, it's going to be a cumbersome process for our tax collector and, you know, to get applications and get them verified. I just think it's going to be a nightmare. And everybody is affected in this town, except for maybe if you have, you know, millions of dollars and it doesn't matter. But everybody who's working, you know, has a family, has a mortgage. It's going to be tough. It's really going to be tough. And if they can get any of this deferred for a while, it'll be great. We have no idea how long we're going to be in this. And it could be a long time until the vaccine comes out. So. That's my two cents.
Sorry, Doug.
Doug?
Just a quick question, Pete. So if we defer the taxes until October 1 and our cash flow to support the government in town, and say we, we end up running out of money, will there be funds available to the state or federal government to help us to offset that until October 1 or how's that work?
So your answer is you, as of right now, there are no funds. Eight? So you would have to, you would have to use whatever financial resources you had with the town. It could be using the unassigned fund. It could be furloughs. It could be whatever you can do to reduce your expenditures to match your revenues.
I'm just trying to figure out the burn rate of what we're burning and what we're bringing in.
So, so between July 1 and September 30, you're looking at about $30 million that we bring in. About 15 million of that, right? Is, is, it would be things that are like escrowed. So those, so that you are pretty much assured around 14, 15 million that you're going to get. The rest is pretty much would be deferred or not. But that would be kind of what you'd be saying is at a worst case, that's what your exposure would be. Yep, Dave?
Everybody, but we, we, we know we're going to have the remainder of the money or, yeah, but I should say by October 1. So there's a whole variety of variables we can use and set, but we could also negotiate with you to say, hey, listen, we'll take it later, you know, things like that. We have all these tools, but I think we're dealing with the what ifs rather than the right now. And I think that's really what our eyes on. And I will say what, Katie, you said it earlier. I think it needs to be clear. This is not for if, for delinquencies and things like that. I think that's very, very important point.
Mayor, can I add some?
Yes.
I just, I just want, you all touched upon this, many of you touched upon it. But please bear in mind, and I've used this term with all of, with many of you for the past three weeks ad nauseam. This is uncharted waters. And, and what we do know is what the governor has issued in his executive order. Those executive orders are finite. In other words, we don't know what will happen in October, whether another order will issue. But once these orders expire, there's no further remediation under them. So what we need to do is, I believe, is you need to, you need to deal with the here and now, what we know. And, and I wouldn't assume that there could be a lawful revisit unless the governor re-ups those orders. Because don't forget, those orders expire. So in any event, just a thought, I mean, I don't know what more you could do. But, but this is uncharted, uncharted waters and there's a lot of rocks and shoals underneath.
You know, I haven't done this in, at a long time, but I'd like to really call the question on this and get this to a vote because we could talk about this all night. But we're in, we're in, we're in an unknown spot. And this deferment seems to be the most sensible tool that we have right now to use that is fair across the board without putting a burden on the tax collector or on the people. Katie said this before, or and Mary Jane said it before, the people who need it the most will not ask. They will not ask. The people who, who don't will be in that office with as many applications as they can get in front of you. So it's got to be for everybody and let's just, let's just bring this to an end.
I have a question for Randy. I just want to, you brought up Randy, that this governor's executive order has an end date.
Right. Yeah, he's, he's ended the tax relief period on July, July 1. This does, this, this doesn't automatically extend to the next, the next tax period.
I just want to make sure that that was cleared. I'd like to withdraw the motion that I made and make a new motion.
So what we have on the floor, unless, unless Tom and David want to pull it off, we have?
I'll rescind my second.
Okay.
I'll rescind.
Chris Cosgrove has lost power at his house. So he's going to try to get on the speaker. Mike Naom's going to call him and get him on speaker. So I'm going to make a new motion.
Okay.
All right. So I would like to move that we adopt?
Can you hear me? I can hear you, Chris. Thank you.
I'd like to move that in compliance with the mandates of the governor's executive order 7S, 7, section 6, that we adopt the temporary tax deferment program authorized in said executive order, offering a 90 day deferment on real property, personal property or motor vehicle taxes and municipal sewer rate charges or assessments for those taxes for residents, businesses, nonprofits and taxpayers during the period of July 1, 2020, extending to October 1, 2020 for eligible taxpayers who have been economically impacted by COVID-19 endemic.
Second, I'll second that, but don't forget the phrase.
I had written, I just want to add this last line, okay? That this does not, this is not an amnesty or a waiver of interest or other, any other charges on taxes that are already delinquent.
Second.
Okay. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Pete, you have to unmute. Chris Cosgrove, he's on, so he could vote.
He's unmuted.
Chris, you there?
Chris, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Now, yep, we can hear you.
Yep, I vote yes, aye.
Okay. Okay.
That's all. Okay. All voted yes. Great.
Move on to the next.
The next part of item 6 is B, which is the mandatory budget adoption process. And Mayor, do you want to say anything about this before I make a motion?
Yes. So basically, the background of this is during the executive order by Governor Lamont is how we complete our budgetary process. I'm going to turn this over in a moment to Randy DeBello. I asked Randy for an opinion on how we would go through this. I'm a firm believer in that the public should be allowed to vote in a municipal budget. It's their tax money. As we were looking and speaking with our voter registrars how to do this, the next day, the governor came through with his new executive order, which you see here. And Randy, if you could kind of opine on what we need to do in the process.
Be happy to. As you know, the governor's issued 22 executive orders so far. This is executive order 7I. And it followed, obviously, in the alphabet, executive order 7C. That's not remarkable, except for the fact that 7C provided for the extension of time within which to adopt budget. Knowing that, the mayor and the registrars, as a matter of fact, I was on the phone with them, were figuring out how we can get a paper vote in order to, to avoid the congregating that is precluded by the executive orders. The very next day, we learned about executive order 7I. And 7I modifies every municipality's budget process and it's mandatory. And what it says is that it eliminates the requirement of a town meeting, depending upon type of government, town meeting or referendum. There will be no vote concerning the citizenry regarding the budget process. What it does is it supersedes the charter. It says notwithstanding the charter, which means instead of the charter where it is inconsistent with, with the executive order, that the executive order will apply. An executive order, as you know, has the force of law. An executive order is presumed valid despite some machinations that it might not be. Unless, unless seven people who wear black robes say it's not, it's valid. So the reality is that we had to modify the system to, to qualify and to satisfy the elements of our charter that were not offensive to the executive order, but we also had to eliminate mandatorily, compulsory, the, the, the need to have people come together, either to vote at a town meeting or at a referendum. So what I drafted in accordance with the, the law, and by the way, this conclusion was reached by a multitude and a majority of municipal lawyers in the state. That's called the Connecticut Association of Municipal Attorneys. The only exception relates to bonding. That means borrowing. And the reason there's an exception relating to borrowing is because when you bond, either by way of a tax anticipation note or a bond anticipation note, whenever you borrow, you are borrowing based upon the full faith and credit of the town. That you can have a town meeting or a referendum for, however, only on that, in that condition and only if a director of health authorizes it, which I doubt that will happen today. The other issue is that, don't forget, there's an executive order, another executive order, that precludes the gathering of more than five people in one place. That leads us to the executive order 7I 13, which is the, the budget adoption order. What we've done is we've taken the precise language of the order and we've created a, and you'll see it in this motion. We've created a protocol that complies and conforms to, complies with and conforms to the governor's obligation, but also has the elements of our charter that are not precluded by the order. This has been vetted for about 15 hours. And it's been researched and it's been discussed with a new number of municipal lawyers, including Brookfield's municipal lawyer. The situation is such that what's described in this motion and outlined in this motion is precisely how the budget approval occurs. It does not dispense with the, with the open meeting requirements that are subject to another executive order, section 7B, which are, it's our IT guys' problem. But, but the fact is, is that this order is precisely and to the T in compliance with the executive order issued by Governor Lamont pertaining to budget making. It's mandatory and, and it's, it's been vetted.
Any questions for Randy so far? Any questions for Randy so far? Doug?
Randy, then, the budget will solely depend on the vote of the town council and the BOF? How does that work?
Yeah, let me tell you how it works. In the normal budget process, as you know, the town, you already sent it to the Board of Finance. They have a hearing, a public hearing, and they can adjust the major objects of expenditure. They cannot adjust line items. They have no line item authority. Once they do that, they can lower the budget, or they can increase the budget. It goes back to you. You can adopt what they did, that is for the lines, as you know, or you could just say, "Look, we're gonna pay heed to the Board of Finance, but we're not gonna do the lines that they suggested." And then it usually goes to the referendum. That step is eliminated. So when it comes back from the town, the Board of Finance, it goes to you, and you either modify or you either accept or adopt whichever way you see fit, and that's the end of it. And then the town, when the Board of Finance sends it to you, they send it to you, of course, with a mill rate. And then you adopt it either the way they send it back or the way you see fit, based upon the adjustments. It does not go to the town meeting, it does not, for an informational town meeting, and it does not go to the referendum by order of Governor Lamont.
Randy? This is Mike Nahom. What date do we have to have our final meeting by, when we decide? Is it like before June 1?
Actually, you're gonna have to have it probably before June 1, but the fact is, is you can still extend that time up to June 15. And, but don't forget, you have to get tax bills out as well. So you can extend it to June 15.
All right. So what the governor is doing with all these executive orders, is there any legal challenges over any of these executive orders like this one? I mean, you know, just because we have to file the executive...
Good question. There are no legal challenges. There are no legal challenges because there's no courts open. The reality is that what will happen here, and I've already spoken with some legislators on behalf of the towns that I represent, including Milford, is that we're asking for, a number of us are asking that the legislators issue what's known as, an act what's known as validating legislation, validating act to say that our chief executives, we're talking the municipal way here, our chief executives, all the actions that they took pursuant to executive orders and pursuant to their emergency powers are validated. We expect that to happen. I would imagine, after speaking with bond counsel, because I spoke with bond counsel on this as well, after speaking with bond counsel, I would imagine the governor's office is doing the same exact thing. So the validity will probably be guaranteed by the legislature when this is all over, like what's called as a validating act.
Katie?
Randy, just a quick question. So should it be invalidated? What would occur for the towns that, as we are going to do, go direct to have the council make the decision without a referendum? What would happen then?
What we would do, as far as I'm concerned, what would happen then is we, the towns have enacted in accordance with law. And the declaration would be made in likelihood that the issuance of the tax bill is lawful because it was based upon what we call color of authority. In other words, the color of law. It was protected by law. And I anticipate that would happen, just as it has in the past in executive orders.
Mary Jane, did you have a question?
No. What? No, I don't think so.
Michael, did you have one? Okay, I guess he didn't have one.
Mike, are you there? You need to be unmuted again.
Dave?
Yeah, well, I don't think there's any, you know, we don't have any wiggle room with this. Either we accept it or reject it, and it sounds to me like we have to accept it. It's an executive order. As the power of law, just as another law for regulations, we have to approve them ourselves. There's really nothing to vote on, right?
Well, we will. So I'd like to make a motion.
Chris?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to, I think as David said, there is no wiggle room. I had talked to Randy. And first of all, thank Randy for the amount of hours that he put in this, and he's giving us the best legal advice he can, and so I appreciate that. But the fact that, you know, our governor has taken away the rights of the citizen of Milford to provide consent on how much they're taxed by their own government is, just seems to me to be an abuse of power. And if, I voted on this budget based on the process we had when we sent it to Board of Finance, and that process included sending it to the voters for their consent, or not, or pass or fail. And, you know, my vote would have been different a month or so ago, you know, had this, you know, been brought to light. But I can't comprehend how there isn't any wiggle room for absentee ballots or nothing else for the people to vote on their own taxes. And I think this governor should be ashamed of himself. You know, Chris, that's interesting. That's what the mayor, the day we were on a conference call, that's exactly what the mayor and the registrars are working on. They're working on a mass mailing of absentee ballots to avoid the convocation of people getting together. Exactly that's what they were talking about, precisely. That's been precluded. Yeah, and I'm not saying these things would be easy, but there would be a way to give the people their voice and maintain criteria for social distancing.
Come on, come on, come on.
Doug?
No, I agree. I think he did this way too early. I mean, he could have waited a little while longer to see how this thing panned out, to do this in April and something, you know, when's the latest we could get the polls or, you know, if they did clear as opposed, and obviously, the paper ballot, but to do this in the middle of April, I think was way too early. He jumped the gun, and I agree with Chris, you know, this could have waited a little while longer. I mean, if you wanted to make it a mandate, he could have made it in, you know, the middle of May, the end of May, instead of doing it in the middle of April. I mean, it's a long way away. I mean, who knows what's gonna happen tomorrow, next month? You know, things could be better, but I agree with Chris. I think he way overstepped his bounds as this authority to do this so early.
Michael Gold, he just wanted me to tell you he has no question.
Okay, thank you. David?
Help me out here. Do we have a motion on the table, or can I make?
No, I want, if everybody is done discussing, I would like to make a motion.
I'm not done.
Oh, Mary Jane.
Yeah, hi. I just want to say, if we're gonna talk about abuse of power, abuse of power would have been bringing everybody out to a pole to get sick and die from COVID. And believe me, it's a very ugly scenario. There's not enough time to, Pete, I congratulate you for trying to get the absentee ballot thing together because that would have been the best way to go, but there just isn't enough time. So we are a crime, and thank you for trying. I think that was awesome. But the biggest abuse would be to bring people out to a pole. So I'm sorry if anybody knows what it's like to see a patient on a ventilator and have your family sick. I already have a sick kid in EMT who's sick with COVID, and it's pretty ugly. It's really ugly. So really, I think, I just think the best thing to do is go, Katie, make that motion, and let's move this on.
Anybody else?
Listen, no one would argue more than me about COVID-19. I've seen it live, so that wasn't my issue. My issue was I don't think you need to do it this early. Obviously, health and safety of our citizens is foremost, so. But anyway, let's vote.
Okay, so I'd like to move that pursuant to, in compliance with of the governor's executive order seven I, section 13, that the town council will modify the budget adoption procedure and protocol for fiscal year 2020, 2021, that in this directive set forth that we would authorize the Board of Finance to consider adjustments, if any, to the major objects of expenditure and to adopt a budget for the July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021 fiscal year, and to set a mill rate sufficient, in addition to the other estimated yearly income of the town, and in addition to such revenue surplus, if any, as may be appropriated to pay the expenses of the town for the fiscal year, and also sufficient to absorb any revenue deficit, if any, at the beginning of the fiscal year, and to do so as directed by the executive order seven, section 13, without holding votes as required by the charter and without complying with any in-person budget adoption requirements or referendum, and to then return said budget to the town council to consider any revision to major objects of expenditure. In so acting, the Board of Finance shall act in conformity with the open meeting and public comment requirements of executive order seven B as employed.
Do I have a second?
Who was that?
Chris? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Have we got Mary Jane and Dave?
Yep.
You heard him? Okay.
Affirmative, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, before we entertain a motion for German, I just, Dave Watson, who's been in here with me, at a safe distance, is to make sure that this go-to meeting went first, went well tonight. So thank you, Dave. Great job, Dave.
Stephanie, I will email you the most, those two motions.
Yes, thank you.
And also, Stephanie, just note that I was on the call right from the beginning, please.
Okay, thank you.
Even though I couldn't say anything.
And Michael Gold?
Entertained motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate you.
Pete, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, guys.
Good job, Pete. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
I'm going out. Going out.
Pete, have you heard him?
Okay.
Walter Bear?
Walter was absent.
Is he okay, though?
Yes, he was fine. I spoke to him the other day.
All right, just checking. Thank you. Bye.